Thank you, just bowing for a word of prayer. You got reminded of the time when someone came to you and asked you about the most important commands of life, about how our lives can really make a difference. And you said to that person that they need to love God with all their heart, body, mind, soul, and strength. And so, God, we come at this moment and we acknowledge you as our King and as our Master. But Lord, then you said, "The second is likened to it, you should love your neighbors as you love yourself." So, God, we recognize that we've been created in community, by community, and for community. And so, Lord, at the beginning of this meeting, we seek to find your blessing to be upon us, God, as we seek to care for one another. I'm thankful, Lord, for these servants that serve on this council. Thank the Lord for police and firefighters and others that make our lives so much easier than they could be. And so, Lord, I pray that each one of us would be intentional in trying to find ways that we can care for those around us. We offer this prayer now in Jesus' name and amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, deliberate, justiciable, and sovereign.
Mr. Mayor? Administration, Minister of the Office, please. Well...
Hey, that's you, I believe, Mayor.
Oh, I'm doing this.
Just wearing a shirt.
Is that right?
Have you got the oath of office, man?
I don't think I've ever done it. Well, I've never done it since.
You know, when I was a boy, when I was a boy, I used to look up at him.
He was asking him to repeat, he was asking him to do it after he stands his... He just put his hand on the bar.
Would you see? You hold that. You hold up your right hand. If you can do that, I'll let you go here. I don't know.
I do, sir.
I state your name.
Fred Holler.
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
Uphold and defend the Constitution...
Uphold and defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America...
And the laws of the United States of America.
That I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution...
That I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the State of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith.
And the laws of the State of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith.
That I will observe and obey the laws and ordinances of the city of Hickory...
That I will observe and obey the laws and ordinances of the city of Hickory.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
And that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties incumbent upon me as fire chief...
And that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties that come upon me as fire chief...
Of the city of Hickory.
Of the city of Hickory.
Fairly and honestly...
Fairly and honestly.
And to the best of my skill and ability so help me God.
To the best of my skill and ability so help me God.
Hey, let's hear it again. The chief's daughter is going to pee out of her pants. This wonderful wife should get the bathroom.
We hope.
I don't have a bathroom.
Kill it. Thank you all. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of you being here. Well, some of you in this room that know me well, you know this is the dream of my life. No doubt about it, this is it. And you know also, when you do thank yous, you always forget somebody. So, I'm going to apologize for that from wherever you start it. But I do have some thank yous. I would like to commend the mayor, city council, city manager for making a wise decision. And I'm going to go back a little ways. Somebody that really gave me a start here. Some of you are going to remember in this room, Chief Feral Moser and Captain Harry Hunt. They gave me my start in this firefight. They gave me the opportunity to be here tonight. So, and I learned a lot from them. Chief Larson Moore, I worked for him for years too. He helped me with my dream. I had a dream and he helped me with it. And where's he at? Where's Tom Allen at? There he is. Finally, that chief Tom. Who helped me really shape my thoughts, my chiefing thoughts, I'll say. He always told me to be chiefing thoughts. He helped me shape my chiefing thoughts and helped me, helped me with, with my dream. Helped me keep my dream alive. Sometimes I sort of wanted to be here often, thinking I wasn't going to ever have an opportunity. But he kept me alive, always. And finally, the last, the community. I can't say enough. I worked here 45 years. There's some good people in this community. They've been good to me and I certainly do appreciate it. I can promise you this, those good men and women back there in the uniforms, they're the greatest. They're the greatest, absolutely. Guys, thank you all a bunch for being here. And thank you for what you do every, each and every day for everybody in our community. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Right there is one of the main reasons that our fire department consistently is the most popular department in the entire city. I'm sorry, Chief Matthews.
I will say a nice word that I have, I've been a little nervous. My head is on a swivel because of all these firefighters in this room, so.
But I will tell you, for a group of people that have the right to give us tickets, our police departments are the popular people around. You know, I really feel having been in this job now 11 years, and we have 600 or so employees, and every one of them is invaluable. And I feel like, I feel like there's a whole lot of family. And I know they look out for each other, they look out for us citizens, and I am just so appreciative and I'm so thankful that I have the right to serve as the mayor of this district of people. Thank you. Okay, we got proclamation that's going to be, that's going to be Chief Holler here?
Yep.
It's his name.
Whereas, the city of Hickory is committed to ensuring safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. Whereas, home fires killed more than 2,600 people in the United States in 2010. And fire departments of the United States responded to more than 369,000 home fires. Whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas, only one-third of Americans have both developed and practiced a home fire escape plan. And whereas, smoking, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Whereas, Hickory's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas, the 2012 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Have Two Ways Out," effectively serves to remind us to develop and practice a home fire escape plan during Fire Prevention Week in the year of the round. Therefore, the Hickory City Council does hereby proclaim the week of October 7th to 13th as Fire Prevention Week, and we call on all people in Hickory to observe safe practices and to develop and practice a way in. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you all.
At this point... At this point, I would like to make a motion that prior to voting on second reading, consent agenda, or departmental reports, that we allow any resident of Hickory that would like subject to our normal rules of decorum to speak before the county. Good night. Motion by Mayor Wright, second by Mr. Meisner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Is there anyone that would like to speak on a specific agenda item before we proceed to conduct our meeting? Okay, let's go to the second reading.
Let's see if it's approval of the minutes.
Oh, I... Mr. Cruz, the minutes of the special meeting of September the 14th, do we have a motion?
Yes, second.
Motion by Ms. Patton, Senator Mrs. Fox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, all members are present. Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of September the 17th?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fox, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion to approve the minutes of September the 18th?
To approve it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion's carried. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Patton, second by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion is carried unanimous. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask the city council to consider removing item L, which is approval of moving the regularly scheduled meeting, so that they're not meeting on the same evening as the national election, which is November 6, 2012. That's, that's actually an oversight on my part, but that was put on the agenda. Your city charter has some somewhat confusing language about holding council meetings on the days of election. And you were looking back at the notes from this talent of previous part, that gave me the impression that that wasn't practice after the agenda's gone out on Monday morning. I started talking to staff, we got to looking at the minutes on that, and that actually has never been your practice. So, you certainly have the authority to change your council meeting, but I did not want that to just be a consent agenda as if you do with every, every election. That's actually not been your practice. So, here, you need to take any action unless you choose to, to change your meeting date and it will stay on the list as has been the practice in the past.
You agree with me? I would prefer that leave take no action.
I'd say agree.
I believe that's unanimous.
Yes.
Departmental reporters.
First Department report, Alaska Assistant City Manager, Andrea Saratik, and the deputy of the Field Council, an update on our Inspiring Spaces Committee and their work.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, this very super creative song that you graduate, and for his new appointment, it's outstanding. So, well, I wanted to spend a moment or two with you tonight just to update you on the Inspiring Spaces project. And I wanted to take you through some slides that are provided and designed from our previous tours from Rock Hill, South Carolina, and Greenville, and just go through the whole update. And so, basically, we have come this far, and this is a summary of the, of the steps that we've taken today. We've done a committee tour of Rock Hill and Greenville. We've done a tour then by land design in Hickory prior to a tour by the committee of Hickory. All of that happened last week. And then, we are headed into, well, we've done a workshop to identify the strengths and weaknesses of, in terms of public space, what, what's really available in Hickory to work on and what's not. And then, we are in the process, land design is in the process of finishing the review of plans, and they are creating a GIS map of our existing public space areas and the linkages between the two. So, those are the things that are happening so far. And we've started basically with this study area map that shows most of this area of the city and shows the potential corridors, those are the dotted red lines. It shows some gateways there on I-40 coming in at LR, just coming in off of 321, Highway 70. And then, some key nodes in our city that, that are either public spaces already or city-owned property. And that's just a face map, just a conglomeration of things. So, so taking you from that big picture down into a few details, here's where we're headed. We are entering into the community input phase, and that's going to include stakeholder interviews at the end of October. And all of these will give, be given meeting dates, times, and places. We're just in the process of finalizing where those will be. So, you'll get a public media release for that information just as soon as what's available. So, stakeholder interviews at the end of October, that's with land design and with different groups. So, lots of the public interest groups across the city will have a chance to come and meet. They will also meet with NCTOT teams, some other staff, some other agencies, different organizations. That'll happen during those stakeholder interviews. And then, we will go, the city staff, into each of the four quadrants of the city and host a meeting where we introduce the concept of inspiring spaces, share the information of the collective data, and ask for some input about what parts of that area, that quadrant, could be improved and sort of what would they look, what would that look like, and get that feedback. And then, we will take all of that information and land design will put it together into a presentation that is a joint city council and advisory committee meeting at the end of November, so after Thanksgiving. And then, land design will host some work sessions. Now, that is not like a council work session, that's a, a there design workshop type work session where they will be at a site, a public building, and they will be working on the plans and they'll be taking input there. And that happens over two days in early December. And then, finally, there'll be an additional city council and advisory committee meeting in early January. And at that same time, either on the same day or the next day, there'll be a community open house. So, we will host not only the advisory committee with you all, but also introduce all of the concepts that are being thought through to the public, just to get one last bit of public input and also just to begin to share some of the potential ideas for that. So, a lot is going to happen in the next two months or so. So, with that, then let's step back to the work done by land design. They've spent several days here, about two weeks ago, and they drove every quadrant of the city. They, they took photos, they did an inventory of potential project ideas. They looked at areas of Hickory that spoke to them as being uniquely Hickory. So, you can, you know, there's everywhere in USA, and of course, Hickory has some of that, but there's also really interesting areas that are still able to be captured in the way of potential projects to improve. And so, there, these are a few quotes now from our steering, from our advisory committee. Landscape approaches will enhance properties along the entry corridors and hopefully make more desirable for retail businesses. So, our committee's starting to think about the importance of these public spaces then providing sort of a visual entryway near our retail, that you can't always count on just the private sector to meet those minimum codes and it looks special. You know, we have our minimum codes, but these are really areas that are right in our public right of way that might need an additional amount of landscaping. As an example, this is one key gateway into Hickory, and so it has the grassy area around McDonald's, and that's the DOT right of way, but you know, it has sort of a, you know, maybe a busy land look at this point. And so, we want to make sure that some of these gateways are then dressed up through the landscaping, maybe some additional signage as you enter Hickory. So, one of our committee members also said this, "Although I think it's important to visit other cities as we are doing to see projects which may give us ideas for Hickory, I think it's just as important to consider the assets we already have, which may be improved, promoted, and celebrated." So, that's kind of, that's a nice way to look at it. You don't have a committee that's just about adding, adding, adding. They see value in our public spaces that we have that have already been invested in. And so, how do we take that next step and dress up some of these spaces that may have been here for 20, 30, 40 years? Another comment was that visual improvements within the community have a positive impact on the economy, attracting residents and employers to the community and creating an investment domino effect. And so, when you have an area that is, is given that, that bit of extra landscaping or signage or street plumbing, things that, that happened in the public realm, then that potentially can create a, a signal to the private sector that that's a safe place, a stable place, a place where there's potential public investment. And we want to look for those areas. And cities look to the, these improvements as starting points and a catalyst for the future. So, our committee members are noticing that that, those two pieces go hand in hand, the public investment and the private investment. Substantial visually appealing landscape features provide not only a positive image but also divert attention from less desirable sites such as utility lines or structures that are not very attractive. And in addition to aesthetics, they may also help to address air quality and noise. So, and this photo is actually right across from the downtown post office. So, just so you understand, it's not a, probably a planting that was really thought through, but it was a nice row of pines. And what it does is just give some, some buffer between that roadway and the adjacent use there. And you know, it does provide maybe some screening, and that's what we, we can't have perfect buildings on every corner, but we can just provide those buffers when we need to. And so, they see the benefit of that. So, just like that commercial, then the residential also sometimes picks up that same trend. And that is, you know, where homeowners taking that same philosophy of providing landscaping on a busy street and buffering there on the corner, creating, creating a nice view from the roadway and maybe just a nicer yard for them to enjoy. So, with that, land design sees that this project falls, tackles five different areas, and those are destinations, open space, corridors, gateways, and just overall character. And so, these projects that will emerge will address either one or more of those themes. And the public areas fall into these themes that are, are either areas that are just sort of mediocre. Well, let me just say, public areas in general are either really good in terms of these five characteristics, or they're just mediocre. And what we want to do is identify some areas that, that need that additional attention and then take them to the next level. So, if you see the map, there, the lines that just show corridors and some gateways and just some areas that we're looking at, up 127, South on 127, 321, 70, 40, Highland Avenue, Olden Road, Main Avenue, and 127, and then maybe just additions, a few additional ones there. So, with that, this map changed slightly, let's look at that. So, here's, this was the first pass. This is the second pass where we said, you know, coming into Hickory from Springs Road is, is a very important travel route as well. And going up and down McDonald Parkway and east and west on Tate Boulevard, coming even out to exit 126 there at Fair Grove. So, so looking at Hickory, you know, we have so many gateways and so many travel paths into town. We really are trying to spread this project across the whole entire city so that we capture potential projects everywhere. So, let's go into the five categories. Destinations is the first one, and the questions they ask the committee are, well, where are the people? Connect this, and then basically, how do you bring those people together? How do you take them from point A to point B along a route that has access either through a nicer roadway, through a, a safe sidewalk or a bike way, things like that. So, they're looking at, at destinations, getting you from one place to the other in Hickory with a thought, with a plan for that, that travel. By doing that, you improve corridors, and we just mentioned corridors can be a number of different things, greenways, it can be roadways, obviously, but you want to be able to travel in different ways through Hickory and let that experience be, be improved. And there's a green market that you can encounter. This is also an example of open space, which is one of those five characteristics. So, along with the roadways, it's not just about dressing it up just so you can drive in your car. It's a, it's a way to say, this is an alternative way to travel through Hickory, getting from point A to point B where that's available through open space. Another example of sharing the road with pedestrians and with bikes. We have some great examples in town of that already. And so, then just thinking about corridors, not only through corridors, one-way pairs, but also ways that take you out to the main retail areas. And then, just residential neighborhoods. Now, this logic probably won't get into residential neighborhoods because it just, it will be large enough to tackle the major areas. But the intent is that, that you have safe spaces with sidewalks on our major roadways and on areas where it makes sense to connect those two, the two destinations together. So, as an example, and there will be multiple maps like this, so this is just one because they, they're, these are the things that they are working on. This is a corridor that would be looked at along Highland Avenue, Main Avenue, from downtown out to LR. And so, if you think about that area and the consultants drove through that, you know, there's a, there's a visual landscape there that, that says, you know, we have older buildings, we have, we're very much a center of commerce, we've got the railroad, we've got, you know, some of our overhead utilities, so, but we have some sidewalk structure there. But we have that greenway, a green patch there that's railroad right of way that, you know, potentially can, could be something that has a little more visual appeal. So, just thinking vaguely about these drives into town and out of town. So, their thoughts initially are just additional bike lanes, potential linear park that butts the rail, potential sidewalk and street sidewalk improvements. And again, all of this will run through a test of, is it feasible? What is the cost? And is that something that the community wants? Same thing with gateways into town. Here's one gateway, but is the, and I'll show you two more. So, these are three examples of gateways. So, which of these three has the right scale and of signage and visual cues that say, you've arrived or you are here? Here's one, and you can barely see a few signs that tell you what, what you can do at this next intersection. Here's another gateway. Do you feel like you've arrived? I'll just tell you right now, this one has, this one wins of the three I'll show you because it has a sense of arrival. You have the right scale of that stone pillar there that says, "I, you are entering the Kenworth neighborhood." And it helps orient a driver to know that they have entered somewhere and helps them negotiate the signage around them. Another existing gateway, maybe, you know, that's all DOTs still allow us to have on on I-40, 321, excuse me, so. But we want to potentially ask for a little more there. So, one of the committee members gave this comment too. I'm going to read it, so I just want you to really digest some of these concepts. Some larger projects would require commitments from developers. So, a circumstance over which the city may have little control, and especially with a depressed con...
Trying to think about the importance of these public spaces then providing sort of a visual entryway near our retail, that you can't always count on just the private sector to meet those minimum codes and it looks special. You know, we have our minimum codes, but these are really areas that are right in our public right of way that might need an additional amount of landscaping. As an example, this is one key gateway into Hickory, and so it has the grassy area around McDonald's and that's the DOT right of way, but you know, it has sort of a, you know, maybe a busy land look at this point, and so we want to make sure that some of these gateways are then dressed up through the landscaping, maybe some additional signage as you enter the neighborhood. So one of our committee members also said this, although I think it's important to visit other cities as we are doing to see projects which may give us ideas for Hickory, I think it's just as important to consider the assets we already have, which may be improved, promoted, and celebrated. So that's kind of, that's a nice way to look at it. You don't have a committee that's just about adding, adding, adding. They see value in our public spaces that we have that have already been invested in, and so how do we take that next step and dress up some of these spaces that may have been here for twenty, thirty, forty years? Another comment was that visual improvements within the community have a positive impact on the economy, attracting residents and employers to the community and creating an investment domino effect. And so when you have an area that is, is given that, that bit of extra landscaping or signage or street plumbing, things that happened in the public realm, then that potentially can create a signal to the private sector that that's a safe place, a stable place, a place where there's potential public investment, and we want to look for those areas. And cities look to these improvements as starting points and a catalyst for the future. So our committee members are noticing that that, those two pieces go hand in hand, the public investment and the private investment. Substantial visually appealing landscape features provide not only a positive image, but also divert attention from less desirable sites such as utility lines or structures that are not very attractive. And in addition to aesthetics, they may also help to address air quality and noise. So, and this photo is actually right across from the downtown post office, so just so you understand, it's not a, probably a planting that was really thought through, but it was a nice row of pinheads. And what it does is just give some, some buffer between that roadway and the adjacent use there, and you know, it does provide maybe some screening, and that's what we, we can't have perfect buildings on every corner, but we can just provide those buffers when we need to. And so they see the benefit of that. So just like that commercial, then the residential also sometimes picks up that same trend, and that is, you know, where homeowners taking that same philosophy of providing landscaping on a busy street and buffering there on the corner, creating, creating a nice view from the roadway and maybe just a nicer yard for them to enjoy. So with that, Land Design sees that this project falls, tackles five different areas, and those are destinations, open space, corridors, gateways, and just overall character. And so these projects that will emerge will address either one or more of those themes, and the public areas fall into these themes that are, are either areas that are just sort of mediocre, well, let me just say, public areas in general are either really good in terms of these five characteristics, or they're just mediocre, and what we want to do is identify some areas that, that need that additional attention and then take them to the next level. So if you see the map, there, the lines that just show corridors and some gateways and just some areas that we are looking at, up 127, South on 127, 321, 70, 40, Highland Avenue, Olden Road, Main Avenue, and 127, and then maybe just additions, a few additional ones there. So with that, this map changed slightly, let's look at that. So here's, this was the first pass. This is the second pass where we said, you know, coming into Hickory from Springs Road is, is a very important travel route as well, and going up and down McDonald Parkway and east and west on Tate Boulevard, coming even out to exit 126 there at Faircrove. So, so looking at Hickory, you know, we have so many gateways and so many travel paths into town, we, we really are trying to spread this project across the whole entire city so that we capture potential projects everywhere. So, let's go into those five categories. Destinations is the first one, and the questions they asked the committee are, well, where are the people? Connect this, and then basically, how do you bring those people together? How do you take them from point A to point B along a route that has access either through a nicer roadway, through a, a safe sidewalk or a bike way, things like that. So they're looking at, at destinations, getting you from one place to the other in Hickory with a thought, with a plan for that, that travel. By doing that, you improve corridors, and we've just mentioned corridors can be a number of different things, greenways, it can be roadways obviously, but you want to be able to travel in different ways through Hickory and let that experience be, be improved. And there's a green market, as you mentioned. This is also an example of open space, which is one of those five characteristics. So along with the roadways, it's not just about dressing it up just so you can drive in your car, it's a, it's a way to say, this is an alternative way to travel through Hickory getting from point A to point B where that's available through open space. Another example of sharing the road with pedestrians and with bikes, we have some great samples in town of that already. And so then just thinking about corridors, not only through corridors, runway pairs, but also ways that take you out to the main retail areas, and then just residential neighborhoods. Now, this project probably won't get into residential neighborhoods because it just, it will be large enough to tackle the major areas, but the intent is that, that you have safe spaces with sidewalks on our major roadways and on areas where it makes sense to connect those two, the two destinations together. So as an example, and there will be multiple maps like this, so this is just one because they, they're, these are the things that they are working on. This is a corridor that would be looked at along Highland Avenue, Main Avenue, from downtown out to LR. And so if you think about that area, and the consultants drove through that, you know, there's a, there's a visual landscape there that, that says, you know, we have older buildings, we have, we're very much a center of commerce, we've got the railroad, we've got, you know, some of our overhead utilities, so, but we have some sidewalk structure there, but we have that greenway, a green patch there that's railroad right of way that, you know, potentially can, could be something that has a little more visual appeal. So just, you know, thinking vaguely about these drives into town and out of town. So their thoughts initially are just additional bike lanes, potential linear park that butts the rail, potential sidewalk and street pickup for improvements. And again, all of this will run through a test of, is it feasible? What is the cost? And is that something that the community wants? Same thing with gateways into town. Here's one gateway, but is the, and I'll show you two more. So these are three examples of gateways, so which of these three has the right scale and of signage and visual cues that say, you've arrived or you are here? Here's one, and you can barely see a few signs that tell you what, what you can do at this next intersection. Here's another gateway. Do you feel like you've arrived? I'll just tell you right now, this one has, this one wins of the three I'll show you because it has a sense of arrival. You have the right scale of that stone pillar there that says, I, you are entering the Kenworth neighborhood. And it helps orient a driver to know that they have entered somewhere and helps them negotiate the signage around them. Another existing gateway, maybe, you know, that's all DOTs still allow us to have on, on I-40. Sorry. 321, excuse me. So, but we want to potentially ask for a little more there. So one of the committee members gave this comment too. I'm just, I'm gonna read, we just want you to really digest some of these concepts. Some larger projects would require commitments from developers, so a circumstance over which the city may have little control, and especially with a depressed economy. So however, if we were able to implement some of those, the less expensive options will enhance not only the appearance of the city, but the likelihood of attracting the projects and the new investment for those larger projects. So again, just going back to, this is not only just a, a public sector project, we are looking for and actively hoping to engage people in the private sector to join with us. As an example, in the three right here, this is Larry Mill, sits right at 127 and, and Second Avenue, so there we go, with a potential project that could have public and private investment. Another great intersection that has potential, as you go out on the runway pair. You have, you know, areas that, that just need some attention, and you know, what, what could happen in that area with some landscaping and maybe some signage improvements? Here's another one across town, that's Els, the old Els and Ferrera, I believe, and that's over by the LR X, another potential project area that can turn ever. The last piece is the, is the fifth component, is character. And so we want to not be anywhere USA, we want to find our visual clues that tell the story of Hickory, and so so much of this work has been done, and that's through the brand grant. And so what are the places that, the questions were asked of the advisory committee, where are the places that feel good to be in, what's uniquely Hickory? And we'll be sort of discovering some of that from, from each of the quadrant areas too as we go through their community meetings, and they're just trying to get that input. And how does our character then define our community? And that's something, so the projects that are selected then speak to that character as much as, as possible. Now, I don't have that skill set to tell you how we define character in Hickory, but, but folks like Land Design do, and they will help us with that. So going back to that map, you can see it goes in every direction, there's a lot to tackle, and again, there'll be a phase plan and a phased timeline. So speaking to the timeline of the, of the plan preparation, we are headed into phase two, so the community meetings that I mentioned, and we'll go back through those, and you can see we've just sort of come out of phase one, I'm sure Land Design is still wrapping up some work done in phase one, but we're headed to phase two. This again is the list of the, of the potential community input, stakeholder interviews, community input meetings, joint meeting of council and advisory committee, their work session with Land Design, additional meeting in general, and a community open house. And that takes us then into phase three, and phase three then just starts, go into the other way of the final concepts for consideration. And with that.
There's not a question that everyone in the community are just, it's hard to hold back or sit tight about all the things that they're doing in any way. Very good group of people that have the overall city being a positive impact rather than something that they're, they're all excited about.
And we are, we are to accept those.
Thank you. You know, we're, we're fortunate because we did get some good young boys.
Yes.
In looking at besides, just when I think about going through long range planning with some of the neighborhood groups over in West Hickory, gateways, they wanted to improve their gateways, and so they've made a lot of improvements by going through their long range planning, and their improvements that we can do.
Oh, yes.
It won't be as costly. And I was just sitting here thinking, on, a lot of you maybe don't know this, but the First Appearance Commission got an urban tree plant for planting on Center Street, and when I go up and down Center Street now, I think a lot of those, those trees have matured. So we have, and we've certainly had some nice things happen at that interchange, so we got a lot of good building blocks that we can build and take that to the next step. And like Jill, the committee members that then have approached me about this are so excited about that, very excited.
I do want to bring one other leverage area. I know the folks, I mean, circle, but the development of this sidewalk that's going to connect, circle all the way up so that kids can walk by to Oakwood and all that, and that was done through collaboration, donation of right of way, and it's sort of got loose things on it, I think we're gonna find. We did do a lot more in the city if neighborhoods and groups are willing to collaborate and work with the city. That was just a really nice thing, it kind of kicked back in here, they probably needed wanting kids to be able to walk to Oakwood, that's, I think, the most walked school in the city, and they wanted to further that, and kind of helped make it happen.
You know, Andrew, you might make a move to have Land Design look at some of the aesthetic points in some of the long range planning. Kenworth and Ridge Union and Red Park and West Hickory, Westmont have all been to the intensive long range planning, so, you know, that, that was community feedback, and we might get some on this.
Absolutely. Thank you. They, and they do have those plans, so I'll just check in with them to make sure they're looking through each one very good. Let me just take you back one more time, because this, there's a lot here, and I've made it vague, but that's because I just want to be sure what I give you is the right answers. So the things that this council will be involved in are specifically the joint city council advisory committee meeting at the end of November, so this will be either the Monday or Tuesday, Tuesday and Wednesday after Thanksgiving, so we're returning to Mary on that date. So that would be a, a lunch meeting or a late afternoon meeting where we have a couple of hours to work with the advisory committee and Land Design and hear all the work today. So that's the first time for you to be involved with it, you know, as far as what the steps here, and then the next, in January, and that would be our full week in January, somewhere between the seventh and the eleventh. That's again, a second meeting of city council with the advisory committee, and then also an open house that will host, where anyone in this community can come, but the projects have given, but, so with those two, with that. Thank you very much.
I want to say one thing again. We had a meeting here of a passenger train taking through downtown. Nice to live in Branson, I will introduce, and so it was passing through, I'd like to see that there's a stop. Double destination.
Next, I'll call in the city's public services director, Mr. Chuck Hanson, to give counsel on that thing on Grace Chapel Road.
Thank you, Fred, Mayor, members of council. This is a project we started three years ago or so now. It's added to our urban area third fair plan, and we have, just remind you, we have sort of four key players in it, of being one, but Caldwell County, Grant Falls, and DOT is actually constructing, paying and constructing this roadway. The three local governments partner to get some of the design done and work on the right of way, we all part sections of the right of way. So what I'm here to really report is, we're finally moving there. And the truth of the matter is, this was going relatively quick in the road project world. Real pleased about that. This one I'm gonna come back to, but just to get your bearings and what we're talking about, this is US 321. The lakes down here, this is MDI complex, furniture center on 321 is Alex Lee Boulevard. This is a commercial complex up in Granite, Walmart site. This is Grace Chapel Road, where it's headed to 321, it'll be right here. And the project that we're talking about, the Grace Chapel, the 321 connector, is essentially this route. It also picks up the dead end of Alex Lee Boulevard and carries it, tees into the road. So from a road name, this is Alex Lee Boulevard, the extension of it. This is really New Farm Road, the extension of New Farm Road, which is the main, name of this facility here. So again, this is, this is an early version, and what we'll talk about some of this here at the end of it. Well, I want to run you through some, some slides real quick, I'm gonna take you through fifteen or twenty, but I promise you it'll be real quick. I'm standing in basically Grace Chapel Church Road looking north, you can see the mountains in the background. This is what it looks like today, this will be the intersection and the tile we have Grace Chapel Church Road, so what I'm gonna do is walk you, walk you north through this road, just to look this up.
Directly south, they're, they're grading on the south side, is that true?
Yeah, what, what, what happens, there's actually a turn lane, Grace Chapel gets widened right here, create a left turn lane, and that, that's what that's about. Now, that's part of this project. This is just, again, continuing on along the, through the project, still heading, still heading north if you will, gives you some idea of what the terrain looks like in there. This is when we're talking about building things in our area. It's not flat. This is a little bit, again, just continuing on as, as we progress into the project going north, if you remember the sort of big sweeping left end curve, that's, that's what we're into now. Again, continuing on, heading north through, through the project. Same thing, you can see the, see the terrain, that a lot of these draws that we're crossing here are really, we're just about at the head end of them. All of these are really what we call wet weather crossing, there's not even a creek at the bottom of it, it's just, it's just a hill. However, this, this one actually is looking south, I just turned around and chopped back in the direction from where it just came from. They have some, some growing on it. This one is sort of a, a key piece. If you look right here, you see some construction, you see some construction here, so I'm on New Farm Road, and again, Grace Chapel's behind me, I'm headed towards the commercial complex in Granite. This is New Farm Road here. This is the intersection of what would be Alex Lee Boulevard, that sort of comes in from this direction and comes around and tees into it. This is one bridge location right here, this is sort of a, a little bit of wet weather creek right there. There's, so there'll be a bridge at this location when it's done, so City Hickory Properties off to the right, essentially MDI Properties off to the left in, in this picture. So this is New Farm Road with Alex Lee Boulevard. What I'm gonna do from here, I'm gonna take you around and start over on this side and come in and show you this same intersection from the other direction, and I'm gonna take you over here on Alex Lee Boulevard and bring you in this way and show you, show you a sort of, some directions if you will.
Well, that's a bank hill, it would be.
It will be much safer than this. Obviously, obviously it'll have some rolling to it, you can't afford, you can't afford to flatten it out, you know, in terms of the grading, lots of the operations. But yeah, some of those hills will have the tops knocked off, some of the bottoms will be filled in to balance the earthwork, so there's some, you know, thirty, forty foot cuts and fills in there very easily.
What's the total length of that?
The two sections together is one's about six miles. One, the, the New Farm is just about a little over a mile, a mile, one point one mile or something, another about half a mile. So here, oops, sorry. This is, I'm actually standing on what would be the extension of New Farm Road, this is the commercial complex of Walmart and, and the facility at Grant Falls, I really didn't take a minute to picture right here where you could see it all. So what I'm gonna do now is, I'm looking north towards the commercial complex, I'm gonna turn around, look south, so this is again, that essentially what used to be an old driveway in there, so here's really the, again, this all gets new roadway if you will, but here's where the grading starts. In this case, 321's off to our right, we'll look at Grace Chapel. Again, a little, little bit flatter on this side, still, still pretty decent topography. Caldwell County Economic Development Commission owns the property off to the left of it, product property off to the right.
Is it going over to Walmart or is it stopped before that?
Yes.
Yeah, front end section to Walmart.
Right, right here is built, so basically this is the Walmart complex. So this intersection, this intersection is built from 321 to here, we will start, since this project starts right there.
No, it, it will connect on the, as far as it's built.
Yeah, it doesn't, technically it doesn't have to go over 321, because what you think of as that entrance into the Walmart complex is built, that'll be, that'll be the other end of it.
It'll be a secondary entrance to Walmart.
Yes. The people, the people of it, residential traffic in North Lakes and that whole area off of 321. Okay, here, again, we're looking south. The next, the next photo I'm gonna show you, I'm standing on this hill right here. All right, again, looking south. If you look over here, that's actually New Farm Road where you're heading over towards Grace Chapel. At this location is the intersection from Alex Lee coming in from the right hand side. City Hickory Properties off to the left, essentially some private and MDI properties off, off to the right at this location. So that gives you some idea of what a mile and a half road project looks like, essentially just clear of state.
This will be all for industrial use.
We'll talk about that here in just a second, getting that. This is Alex Lee Boulevard, I got essentially 321 to my back, MDIs here on the right, first complex is on, on the left. The next photo is essentially, I'm gonna stand right here at the end of the road. This is what it looks like where essentially the extension continues on. My next photograph is basically right here, just past this piece of equipment. This is another bridge that goes in, you can see they're sort of shaping up the bridge abutment to get ready for, for basically, they'll start building, this is the one of the two bridges, they'll start putting those in this winter. If you go up here, and in about where you see this tree, it sort of bears back to the left, and that'll be the intersection that we've seen from the other two angles. So with that said, back to, back to this photo real quick, and this is something very preliminary, in fact, even the road alignment is just a little off on this, this picture because it was, it was done before the road was totally finalized. Some stuff we use to discuss with DOT and, and the other players. Extension, New Farm Road, what you see is essentially some developmental mental sites out here, and in this case, this, you know, there can be ten versions of, of this sketch if you will, but right here it shows very easily about nine different pad locations. Couple different versions of that. The way, the way this property works today, this property here is City of Hickory, this piece and that little lake, and this is MDI, this little intersection is MDI, and what you see is this property right here is Caldwell County Economic Development Commission. So there's sort of, I'm gonna say three players in, in those site pads you see. If you think about some of those hills and valleys I showed you, here's, here's one bridge location, here's the other bridge location, there's a draw between these two pads, so what you have is, is a couple of what we call salves in here, there's a, there's a building pad on top of this knot, there's a building pad on top of this one, and then there's, you know, this flattens out a little bit more in this area, and another, another hill in, in there, so if you add up these numbers through these nine, nine building sites, and again, this is, this is preliminary at this stage, notice, but there's, there's about a million square feet between all those, those nine buildings had added up at this point in time. Utilities is, is the next thing, we probably need to get some conversations really with our players, our partners. We serve sewer to the MDI, Grant serves the water, serves just water and sewer, I know they're gonna extend water down for this part of it, we'll still need to get utilities in, you know, for, for this part, and, and some of that may be depending on how it develops, if it's one pump station to get sewer out of there, or is it two or three small ones to get sewer out back to, that, gravity sewer would come to here, pump to about this location, there's the pump station below MDI, pumps across the lake to a pump station on this side of, this side of 321 bridge essentially, and then that sewer actually goes to our northeast west toward Triggle Plant. So this is sort of the early stages of being able to create some, some more property that can hopefully help us all grow in, in the future. Again, it's taken four partners to, to make this happen if you will, between Granite, Caldwell County, NCDOT, and City Hickory. So underway, timing, this winter will be two, two bridges under construction, some of them are masquerading if weather lets them happen, and start next spring sort of of them are masquerading if weather lets them happen and start next spring to sort of finish up that grading, hopefully about this time next year it'll be a, uh, one, another one can check off the, off the list. That's a quick version of four years worth of work to get to this stage, three years worth of work to get to this stage. And, and a hard year worth of work to check it off.
They're just gonna ask me to get with that, I will get that, but then I'll know your residential areas will be over there.
Well, there, there's residential here existing, there's residential here existing. Some of this, based on the fact that it's in, in some of the watershed protection areas, there's gotta be quite a bit of open space tied to any of the, eating of dust, so what you may see is some of this property, again, just due to topography, one, uh, and requirement for some open space, you, you may see some open space in there, may, not necessarily properly residential, uh, but it's probably gonna be some open space that acts as, as watershed protection, but same standpoint creates the bubbles that that's probably needed in there.
Most properties are zoned, uh, on, uh, so it's, it's kind of industrial zone or
Thank you.
Uh, next and final department report, I'll ask the city's brand manager and communications director, Mr. Manny Pitts, to come and give us an update on, uh, the branding initiative and life well crafted.
Good evening, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, City Council members, and Mr. Frank, I cannot believe it's been a year, it's been an exciting year of life well crafted, and the bottom line is this could not happen without partnerships, without your support, and when I talk about partnerships in the next few slides here, you're gonna see it's community partnerships, you're gonna see it's departments, the parks and recreation, utilities, everyone has jumped on board, and so we're gonna have to go through a tour, but before we do that, I wanna refresh you a little bit, of course. Hopefully we have all dreamed about this like I do on a regular basis, Hickory Life Well Crafted and how that encompasses more than crafting furniture, it's crafting the life and crafting a lot more. Of course, this is, um, let me get back a little bit here, this is our paragraph that describes us, it's very, as the year went on, working with the Business Development Committee and fellow team members and staff, all of this became more relevant. As we move forward, take a look at the ad that you'll see here shortly, which many of you've seen, it talks about our community, which is doors and makers. We are very well rounded in all the different assets we have. Location is, is very, very important, and you'll see that in the very last thing I show you this evening and how that's really important, and then of course, again, talking about location, again, being all the way across the country between I-40, North Carolina, California, then the craftsmanship here, and we talk about our details and our arts and our quality. So all of that's begun, going to make a lot more sense as we've gone through the year. These are the words, this is Hickory's dictionary, some of the words, strength, lovely, hard work, promise, and I know all of you were probably listening to WHKY last Wednesday morning, get hit to Hickory, get the challenge, and also went on our Facebook, and we got lots of fun feedback from that. The word, and we're gonna do this about once a month, this, this word is passion, and on the radio I said, I want you to think of all the positive things in our community that surround, I mean, that, that really surrounds around the word passion. We posted it up on our Facebook, people are passionate about running, people are passionate about Brett's ride, but this weekend people are passionate about the community events, people are passionate, oh, the list went on and on, and the people, the people kept coming over and over again. I think I covered it right there, right? There's probably some on there today. So I'm not sure what the next quarter will be, so too. Of course, the colors, we've seen them, the first place we saw these colors were at the Crawdad Stadium, the Parks and Recreation Department had the first official project of using the brand colors. So again, the top ten, looking at these top ten months, last year at this time, Alan Jackson, president of, or the chair of the Business Development Committee, myself and some others talked about, these things have to happen in the first ten years, I mean, the first ten, these first ten things must happen the first year in order for this to be successful, so I won't read them all, but of course, it's a laundry list, and we have worked on every single one of these. I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve as the brand manager and thankful to be able to move, um, a position into our office from the library, that's really been helpful this year. And the next slide, we're gonna talk about a few of the top ten that made the list this year. Of course, we couldn't do it without partnership. Last year at this time, or I'd say probably sixteen months ago, we all looked like we were all from different planets, and now we look like family, and we look how, and that's really important, and again, logo is more than just a look, it's a strategy, but as we all start to work more together, that really to me shows a shield of, of, we're proud of where we live.
You know, and, and I don't think that, that I would have imagined that this could have happened as quickly as it did. And we also have, uh, Commover and Newton that are in the process of redeveloping their logo, and I think what it says to us is that what we found about our community is right, I mean, it fits, it's acceptable to everybody, and, uh, and what I've heard from the other communities is how much they appreciated us getting out and leading, uh, doing the work to, to define ourselves, to come up with a logo and, and the tagline and all of the terms that go with it, and you can see, just like Manny said, it's now a family of brands that represents our community, that really is cohesive and, uh, and that is exciting, I mean, it really is.
And part that I remember way back, I'd say how it might have been, but the business committee, the business committee, they had a draw involving all the pieces together in, in the city.
Well, it's also been neat how they have taken the leadership role in it, because I know that some of, some of your business development committee members have gone and made phone calls and made visits to key members of these organizations and, and really pitched it and sold it to them, so it wasn't your city staff doing it, you know, it was business leaders in the community who were saying, hey, if this works, we need to get behind this, and that's the big reason why it's been so widely adopted and so successful.
All right. Moving on to the next, of course, the first thing they asked you to do is brand your website. Of course, this was implemented probably September second of two thousand and eleven, just put through this, our social media, Life Well Crafted, and then talking about the themes on there as well. This next slide is the former, Start Something Here, now Hickory Well Crafted. It is changing every day, by the hour, as we're, um, reaching out to the partners, started Start Something Here, and it was a very well-made site, put together well, but as we move forward with the brand and we work with our neighbors, we're working more toward pushing the Hickory Well Crafted brand, and if you notice on the bottom, talking about the Business Development Committee, again, their leadership wanted to recognize businesses that have been in Hickory for more than seventy-five years, and so we, um, this story you'll see on the front of Hickory Well Crafted now is about Hickory Sheet Metal and about their, how they've been here, there's more to come, and there's, there's a whole project in that way, and then this is a new one that was just added at the end of last week. And one of the things people kept saying in the brand is, we love the seasons in Hickory, there's so much to do, so this is a story about fall well crafted, and includes a lot of things, so I encourage you to check that out too, so it is changing, and we have another one coming up in the next eight or two, and we're gonna count with some writing too, of course, our look. Speaking with the Lake Hickory Rotary Club last week, I said, raise your hand if you have seen this look somewhere, and I think everybody raised their hand, and, um, that was exciting, because last year at this time, they're like, hell, we haven't seen it yet, so it's, it's making its way out there, and North Star Destination Strategies told us it really takes two, really two to four, five years to saturate your community. Next thing, of course, our water tower, which I smile every time, I've got the three of them. First we mentioned the Crawdad Stadium, and to the right is another example of partnership, downtown development association purchased five signs to navigate people through downtown, and this is one of them too, so thankful for them taking the lead, the first signs that will go along with, um, our Inspiring Spaces project as well. Here are just some examples of getting out there, of course, the Chamber of Fans, Musical Esa, we were presenting the brand, we're gonna be presenting the band at Oktoberfest all weekend long, the golf tournament that's coming up, and of course, I hope, I'm sure all of you saw the nice new podium that will outlive probably Chief Holler and myself, as we worked with some others on this new podium that's made from a Hickory fire frame actually, and it's, uh, Hickory wood, and it's got our logo on it, so that debuted at the nine eleven event, and Scott Malar, no stranger to any of us who works hard for us every day, he's, his annual meeting, he focused on crafting a community, a lot of construction there, and you'll see he has it signed there, and that's really important, I'll show that unit again, and I know we all know that. Just some other examples, baseball, we play, we'll play, had some fun with that with the Crawdads, the Hickory Alps and the Lady Alps took the lead in this Taste of Hickory, Taste Well Crafted, because we do have very fine, um, chefs in our community. The Symphony this year, this is their theme, Music Well Crafted, I told them that should just be their theme for life, they don't need to change it every year, and then it's fine. Another opening, their new concert, their first concert of the season this, this Saturday, and of course, swinging other stars was a premier event. Many of you have seen this, and it's just a way we pottery, the pottery festivals, one of the first partnerships we did, because it came in March, and that really fits our brand, and just working with different organizations that make Hickory who, who we are. The sales in September, boy, this just happened, and it was part of just a big movement of excitement, and people were downtown, and people were dancing from two-year-olds to eighty-five-year-olds, and, and just really enjoying the new public space, which is mentioned in our brand print, and kind of running with the Life Well Crafted, this was Music Well Crafted, and we have so many ideas for the next year, it's gonna be exciting. Another partnership, Charlotte's Great Northwest, the Economic Development Commission, they work a lot with Charlotte Regional Partnership, which is important, and when I talked about location earlier, uh, people know the Charlotte region well, across the country internationally, so this is on the back of the two thousand and twelve, thirteen Charlotte USA Economic Development Guide, and more than a half a million of them are developed every year, I mean, are produced and given out to economic developers across our country. This Life Well Crafted, I'm very, very proud of this ad, comes as a partnership with the Hickory Furniture Mart, um, the Commission of Business Bureau, and the Economic Development Corporation, of course, the City of Hickory, and you can't really read off that print right there, but it talks about our community, and it was in the U.S. Airways Magazine in September, very popular magazine all the time, but especially in September where, um, the big convention was going on in Charlotte. That was one of, um, probably the most well, the most well-flung air, I would think, airplanes.
It needs to, it's gotta record, uh, survives and partners, and giving the pride when you get after it.
And that's excellent, and that was, that was the purpose of this, but here was the most fun, I know customer mileage has already heard me tell the story. So you know when you're in an airplane, and I was fortunate to go on an airplane in September, of course, I mean, I was on the USA Air, makes small talk with people all the time, sitting beside you, ready for all, what do you do, where are you going, you're from here, and so I'm still, where, he said, where, where do you live? And I said, I think that magazine, I live on page eight. I said, yes, and so that is the highlight of this time, there's lots of highlights, I just loved that moment. And this is new, this hasn't, this is the first time this has been shown, this will be in the Greater Hickory Classic Program Guide this year, talking about partnerships again, and this just shows our entire region. Year two, here we are, I'm standing in year two right now, we made it through the first year of Uncharted Waters, moving forward, lots to do, this is just a snapshot of some things that we're working on, again, saturating the brand, again, so it takes between two to four to five years, continued partnering with Economic Development Visitor Initiatives, of course, that's key, it's essential, that's why this was done, working hard with the Business Development Committee on that, the Economic Development Commission. Of course, stakeholders, it's, it's important to continue to meet with them and remind them how important the brand is, and they get more, they get more, they get more, so we're building partnerships, creating a larger presence on the web, doing that every day. We've got a, our next phase really is to put together strategic planning, in a way working with them around their business center there, talking with them about how they can help us jump to the next level, how they can, because they're students, very bright students, and they have, um, important projects, and how do we reach out to the companies in the middle of the country that are looking for a place, that are sport, you know, there's friendly people, people to put to work, and so that's really important for year two. And continued community events, that's been important. Creative Detective, this is fun, this was, this is in our brand print, talks about finding people in your community to make it, put them to work, let them see what's already being done and build from that, focus on the arts, again, that definitely makes, that's really what helps make Hickory who we are. Campaigns, and we talk about health and wellness, do some more fitness runs, Hickory Walks, and we're trying, and we've partnered with the unthinkable that Brian recently did a couple of weeks ago, how important that is, and really work with our students. This is the brand, we only have a few more slides to give here, this is just a copy of the partnership, and I, I know we have a few rotary clubs ready to sign on and some other groups as well, businesses. The expectation again is to help us move this forward, and I know it takes more than just, it takes all of us in the partner to use our branding elements. And the vision, this is important, it stays the same, really looking ahead, if you think about it, we, this, we've started this year, but the vision is to continue, of course, our investment in revitalization, heard about that just from Andrea's presentation about how important that is, and that's part of the brand print. Again, the collaboration partners, being in partnerships, key, and of course, opportunities to enhance our resources. We, we live in a beautiful place, and we really have to get that message out to the rest of the country and the world. Any questions?
I have a comment, one, this is something our community, obviously Claire, a world-famous sport, his commitment, didn't use the things, went to all four of them, and it was hundreds of people, and kids, playing, dancing, having a great time, and it was just, it was wonderful, I, I do appreciate his being so positive and jumping handed from a, just somebody wanting to help, he's from Hickory, he loves it, and, um, it's nice to have someone so positive in our community to do that, and, um, it like, someone moved next door to her in Kansas, and she gave him her flyer, and they went down to all of them, and they said they had no idea this would be helping Hickory do, do a period.
I just want to comment how fortunate we are to have you, you have taken, given Mark to it, and I have every confidence that that's you, you're the one, that we just sent that message.
Thank you, I hope so, a lot, a lot of help, a lot of partnerships, so thank you.
There's no doubt that you do make about this. There must have been ten or three of you that came to me today and told me out, they appreciated the program.
And Hickory Rotary Club, um, more unanimously, looks, I am definitely so.
Thank you. We're gonna end it on this, we have it in play twice, but it's our new commercial spot that will air only during the golf tournament, but we'll also use it in endless ways.
Natural wonder to artistic splendor, recreational playground to entertainment haven, small-town values to big-city drive, a friendly business climate with southern hospitality, and entrepreneurial center with a rich heritage of quality craftsmanship, the hub of Charlotte's Great Northwest. This is Hickory, North Carolina, life well crafted.
One more time, so you can catch it.
Natural wonder to artistic splendor, recreational playground to entertainment haven, small-town values to big-city drive, a friendly business climate with southern hospitality, and entrepreneurial center with a rich heritage of quality craftsmanship, the hub of Charlotte's Great Northwest. This is Hickory, North Carolina, life well crafted.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any appointments? Any petitions, requests? Matter of following the agenda? Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have something, um, I'd like to make a motion, I don't know, I need to, um, get approval to, uh, make a motion, I guess I just made a motion. Here, the, the motion is, it is sort of along the lines of, uh, of you asking, um, for folks to speak prior to the consent agenda. I see some issues with that, um, potentially moving forward as a practice, um, specifically pulling out... Specifically pulling out specific agenda items for discussion. I'm concerned about, let's say, the case of a public hearing, where we have a bona fide advertised public hearing. And then here, at the beginning of the meeting, we ask folks, who wants to speak on a specific agenda item? Well, folks can come up and speak on that agenda item, which would in fact be the public hearing. It would be outside the protocol of a public hearing. Public hearing will be open, it wouldn't be subject to the same timeframes. I mean, that's one thing that I think we need to consider. The second thing we need to consider is, I think, the conduct of our meetings. We like hearings for citizens, I do, I certainly do, and want to do that. But, I mean, I think there's comments that are more along the lines of forum-type comments. Like, you know, like, I know Mr. Bob, he's not here. He might speak to us about the party, bearing an underground line. And then there's comments, of course, about specific items that may or may not be in the meeting. So I'm a little bit unclear as to, and I think the public perhaps might be the clearest perhaps, when the appropriate time for them to speak would be. But what I'd like to suggest is we round up three council members that would be willing to do it, and meet with our legal folks. Because I think there's a lot of legal issues that particularly relates to public hearings. Meet with our staff folks, who can give us some ideas and best practices. And then move forward, so we've got sort of a good understanding of, bring forth recommendations. I don't think there's any urgency to this. I don't think the committee would have to convene right away and report within the next month or so. But I do think that, I wanted to throw that out for discussion among council, and move that we move forward towards developing a committee or to explore that particular issue. And others that we may, that we may give to other issues. That's the place to, the conduct of our meetings.
You have to vote for law?
I guess, no, I'm looking, that's purely a form of long-winded motion. I was trying to, that's why I was asking about, I didn't want, you know, get into explaining all this without, the motion is that we institute a committee to look about the kind of meetings. And particularly sets in common the duration of and the sequence within our agenda.
I think the first thing you will need is to vote on whether to allow him to raise this item on the agenda, and then address this motion.
I thought you had to look for any time to bring something up for me.
Well, I'm here, it says matters novel agenda requires majority of the council to consider.
That's why I wasn't sure.
Well, I'll make a motion if we discuss this.
I'll take it.
Yeah, motion, Ronnie, second, I'm asking, any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Get your hands. Well, I'm not at all opposed to that, except that it seems to me like we're making something very complicated that's pretty simple. If you'll notice, my motion was that if anyone wanted to speak on something that was a specific agenda item, that they could do so before we vote, and not have to wait until after the vote. During this referendum process, I heard from people that, essentially, why would that be a big deal to let them speak before you vote, let them not even vote? I don't think people would confuse it. Public hearings, they understand, they have a right to speak. And so they would be allowed to speak during the public hearing. If they get off the subject, I think we ought to say, just like we did with the speaker who kept getting off the subject, and we were talking about the date and wording of the referendum. We said, "You're off the subject, what does that have to do with the referendum?" So I think we should say, "It's about a specific issue." This is not, this is not a chance to get up here and set a tone for this entire meeting based on some gripe you have about city council. You got to say that for the end, but you'll get your chance. You'll get your chance.
And I think your motion was well-put, because it spelled that out. At the end, you have an opportunity by going to speak about due power, or, you know, some problems we've got to have, or just a forum, something we might have brought. But if anybody has a specific item that they want discussed...
That's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, tonight we didn't really break that.
And so my recommendation would be that, as long as that's working, tonight, by chance, it worked, if there's chances, nobody had anything pressing that they want to talk about. But it would be fine if somebody wanted to talk about a second reading, or any of these matters, that would be fine.
I guess my question is, since we're in a discussion, is are they, they're sharing an opinion? It's not, we're not entering into a discussion with them, or they're just giving an opinion on that second reading, saying, "Look, I'm against consent item K, I'll be called."
Well, they can't even, they, well, the way I interpreted that was they get to express their opinion like they would at the end of the meeting. But it's just they get to do so before we vote. There is, it's not a cross-examination council, Ron. And we have not let, we have not let our readers figure right into that. And I can imagine that we ever would. But, and I think we should keep them on the subject. But it seems to me like it's very simple, as long as it works this way, why not just do it? You know, hey, if you want to speak before we vote, you can speak before we vote. But if somebody abuses it, or a group of people get together and abuse it, we don't have a process that we set up, we don't have a resolution, we don't have anything that we've got to undo. We just say, "Folks, that was a great experience, experiment in democracy, it didn't work." And we should do it.
So I must have missed something, too. But we talked about how we were going to do this at the front end of the meeting. So what's your problem with what we talked about in the front end of the meeting, Ryan?
I don't have a problem with it.
I just didn't understand, sort of...
Where I'm going with this? I mean, I know that we are statutorily required to receive public comment at our meetings, okay? Yeah, we always have, of course, we want that. And I don't understand when people say, "Hey, I'd like to be able to address city council." But the problem is, it's at the end of the meeting, and you've already voted.
But we solved that, didn't we?
Well, we solved it, we solved it with a motion that is subject to change, that does not really, it doesn't have a lot of, I think there's just a lot of uncertainty with it, in my opinion, a lot of uncertainty. I'd like to see, I'd like to see a study, I'd like to see a public hearing. No, I'm not saying a public hearing by any means. I'd like to see a subcommittee of council.
What if the people want to speak? We could make this a lot more complicated, in my opinion, only my opinion. A lot more complicated than it needs to be, unless it proves to be a problem. I don't think it's going to ever be a problem. We've only in eleven years had one person say they wanted to speak on an agenda item before we voted on it. In eleven years, one person.
And two, they have the ability to call any council member or later and ask that they have the agenda item explained. So we've got Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
We've got four days.
We've got the time to explain it to a citizen, and we don't do our job so well in explaining it. We can ask that they meet with Mr. Berry to explain it. But I think it is incumbent on us to be able to explain any agenda item, if we're given the power, to explain it to a citizen that we call. But I have yet in my seven years, and no one has ever called and said, "I want you to pull this off." Or I have had people ask me, "Explain so," and I can explain it. But it's also incumbent on these citizens to step up to the plate if they have a problem, to contact us.
I understand, I'm not advocating for one way or the other. This is not some, I'd just like us to put a process behind it, out here that people can participate in, and then we'll know. I don't necessarily think what we've done is broken. I do understand the whole, you know, the comments before the thing.
We only have one case, and I felt like we are, I felt like it's an easy response. We're going to give up that amount of time anyway. I shouldn't say, we're not giving up time, we are doing our job and listening to the citizens, whether it comes first or last. This is not changing, not adding anything to our meeting. We are just avoiding this implication that we just pale male rushing to a vote, and don't care what the citizen thinks about it.
But the citizen feels strongly that they can contact.
And that's why we end up with this thing of cross-examination. And if you say yes, it's going to go one way, you say no, it's going to go another. And so we're up here in a cat twenty-two, sometimes looking kind of push. Because we're not supposed to be in a debate with the resident that's here in the meeting.
Not none, not at all.
It's not a job.
Right, right. And I think a public hearing is a very separate and...
Well, if somebody wanted, if somebody said they wanted to speak about a public hearing item, I would make sure they understood that they have an opportunity here in the public hearing in accordance with the provisions of the public hearing, to speak at that time. Now, I can't do anything if they would say, "Well, I'm just going to speak now, I don't know what we're doing there."
We've been always very open about public hearings. We've been over backwards with that. And you know, over the years, council members have removed items from consent agenda. And they may be, in some instances, removed it for their own explanation. But a lot of times, it was citizen-driven. Someone saw that, they took it upon themselves to read the agenda, to educate themselves about what was coming up. And they asked their council member to remove that for further explanation. So that has worked. It is worked.
And that mechanism is already there, if citizens take any choice.
And they have four days. Now, if a resident calls me about a consent agenda item, I would assume, first of all, I would do the best I could to explain it as I see it. But I would assume that there might be other citizens with a similar issue, a similar question. So I would ask that the staff essentially do a department report. And they make sure we understand, and the citizenry understands exactly what we're voting.
And please understand, I'm not suggesting that we've got a broken process or a broken system with the way we're doing things now. I see, and this is just me, and I may be wrong. I see difficulty downward road trying to manage under the system where citizens are asked to speak on any item that will turn on the agenda. That's me, that's my opinion, and it may not, it may not turn out to be anything. But I do see some issues there. And I think that there is this notion of, we can't evolve into a government that every decision we make is, you know, we've got, that we get system comment on by necessity. I mean, certainly, we want it when it's necessary.
I don't want anybody to say they wanted to tell me something that I didn't hear.
Right, I agree with that, I agree with that. Yeah, right, right.
And that's their last, standing right there is their last chance. And I want them to do it before I vote, rather than after I vote.
Makes me a matter of rearranging the agenda, tweaking it a little bit so it does satisfy our situation. The citizens see the board. Maybe once I've got an issue on the consent agenda coming up, that I might explain my...
See, what I like about the simplicity of what I thought we proposed and voted on tonight is it accomplishes every objective that I've heard anyone ask us to consider. It is not a process that will ever have to be undone. If it doesn't work, it will be because the citizens do not want to make it work, and we just quit offering that opportunity. Then maybe we set up a committee and go through this process of coming back to the, coming back and saying, "This is the changes we're going to make to our agenda here." But right now, I think I'm answering one specific contention that I heard expressed by people who really didn't have a dog in the referendum fight.
Right, and I'm not, like I said, it's not about whether I'm in favor of that or not. I'd like to see it more thoughtful, I guess.
But the more we go through a process, all I'm saying, why don't we continue this and figure that out? And we can always undo it at any time.
Right, right.
I do have a motion.
I do have a motion, yeah, yeah. So it even needs to have a second or a...
I don't hear a second. But thank you, Mr. May, we appreciate your comments, just like we do any citizen's comments.
Thank you.
We have a close session? Oh, I would like to mention one more thing, our library, they have the nicest, the nicest little coffee shop, if you go in there, you can get a cup of coffee, and you can take it up into the library. That's the only time you're allowed to take beverages into the library, is if you buy them on the spot. Don't take your Slurpees with you, it adds more flavor. But it is so nice, you walk in, the breakfast is there, the furniture, got the Hickory sculpted furniture, the hammer and the manufacturing, and it just looks fantastic. And I was so proud to be able to participate in the ribbon cutting and have some of that first breakfast. That's where I get most of my food these days. Any, what are we going to do?
Did you get a recognition first, or did you want some of the other?
Oh, are there any people who would like to be heard?
Anybody else want to speak? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James Davis. I'm a member of the Sisters for Equity and Government. And I had a lot of things that I really wanted to say. But it's one thing that I really wanted to say to you. You can take out, well, first of all, as I look around, there's no acorn with me or my group. That's number one. And I am appalled, because all of you know where my group, where it came from, how it was founded, and under what circumstance. And then to sit up and let people talk about it like that, and not say a word, I think that was cowardice, and thank you. But what happened on the referendum, that is something in which the wise should reflect. Because it was a good fight, and we only lost by a hundred and forty votes. I've said before, and in reference to the Bible, I said that the people see you as drunk, but you see yourself not drunk. A hundred and forty votes, those are people that's in your own community, your own ward. They are disblown with the way you have governed. And they show that, if you would, you know, speak the truth, you say, "Yes, that's right, that is true." So we need to get together and not just push things through. You made a statement, to say what a citizen want to talk about before the vote, or say it afterwards, I don't care, because you've already made up your mind. I have an issue with the city of Hickory using our money to go to different cities. And opposed on those cities, can you not make up and come up with ideas of your own? And I allude to the Bible again, the story of Hagar. She was running between the hills. And what she wanted, remember the spring came up beneath her feet? You have a university over there. And someone make a statement, they don't want to listen to the citizens. We voted you into office. Or we didn't vote and you got into office. Now, this is something in which the wise should reflect. I am your friend. And I love this city, and I stated before, my family was deep in this city. You can check our record. But I wish, and I sincerely hope, that you wouldn't be so arrogant, and to be so hardy, and not to listen to the citizens of Hickory. Because we're all in this together. All in this together. And the film that was shown, I kind of got offended by it. Because there are more black people, there are some black people in Hickory. And then to make mockery, southern hospitality. Come on now. Subliminally, that's arrogant. And that's kind of, that's setting an image. How do you expect a major corporation or a major company to come to this city? How do you expect a major corporation or a major company to come to this city? Contrary to popular belief, there are black executives that run major businesses. You have to appeal to us too. We're in this too. We're intelligent people too. I wish you would consider this.
Three minutes.
And I'm, I am your brother and your servant and I will work with this city and the city council to do whatever we need to, to bring this city forward. It's not balanced and I don't think this is an all-American city. Not where I'm from, not where I see, not to hear the citizens come up to me, Jim, such and such and so and so, well, you had your opportunity. What you going to do about it? And as in calling city council members for something, I made one call one time about something and that person was gracious enough to grant that to me, but then when it happened, you already made up your mind. It doesn't, so far, far waste time. Keep it the way it is if you're not going to listen to the citizens. Seriously. These are your neighbors who voted you in the office, who come to you and you are supposed to be a leader. And the Bible teaches us, take he who is chief among you and let him or her be your servant. Are you serving the citizens of Hickory or a select group? I saw on the slides, different things, Northwest Hickory and different areas. Really? Somebody needs to pull the string and pull the city back together and you have the authority and the power to do it, but will you do it or will you let your arrogance stand in the way? And I am waiting for someone, I've heard people come to me and say that such and such and so and so come to me, said that they wish that I worked at the soup kitchen instead of me doing what I'm doing. What type of business, what type of, what type of stuff is that from a city council member? I'm waiting on that person to come to me and tell me to my face what I should do. Heed my words. If it's going to be business as usual, look out because we're all in this together, not just you, not just me, all of us, we're in this together. And I've heard certain people say, well, we're going to work together. Is that, is that a good start?
Six minutes.
Seriously, look at yourself. Look at yourself, look at your arrogance. And it hurts me to my heart, it really does. I have people all over this country and all over the world who's looking at Hickory, who runs major corporations. Well, JD, I'm not going to bring my, I'm not going to bring my company there. Well, why not, sir? Because for one, look at the school system. And I've heard someone brag about, we helped New Conover get a business down there, a major player down there. This community outside of our city get a business down there. What about your own people? Those kids are not in the street because they want to be in the street. What are we going to do for them? Seriously, think on these things. They're not in there, they're not in the street dying because they want to, because they've lost hope. But some make it business as usual and go on about their daily business? Well, it's all right. I can do that because I'm so and so. Let him show me his authority. Seriously. Seriously, think over these words. And also, city council, it ties in to the school system. Look at the school system. You think, you think a highly intellectual person who's the head of a corporation got to bring their children to this city and they have to enroll them into school? Reach out to them. It's not all about you. It's about all of our kids. I don't have a kid by a lawsuit, but I'm a father to many. And I think, and I, I probably get four hours of sleep at night thinking about what are we going to do for those kids? And you should be too, because they are our future. They may, they may one day be sitting where you are. Are you going to give them a time of day and teach them and educate them to look at things collectively as a whole? Or it's going to be the front of your own agenda, making sure your area or your community is what I want to be? Read some books.
Nine minutes.
Read some books to broaden your horizons, your horizons. Today I went to the doctor, my business fell on me because of a decision that someone who was an authority over me made when I was a kid, messed up my football career, messed up my life, but we make plans and God make plans and God is the best of plans. Remember that, God is the best of plans. You make plans and God make plans and God is the best of plans. That book that we read, that I'm quoting from, you have an implication at the beginning of the meetings, heed that. Take it out, it's a transparency, put it over what you do daily. Make that Bible live. And if you're wrong, you have to come in accord with the truth. Because I tell you this, God and His word doesn't evolve, it stays true. So you need to come in accord with the truth and watch how much you will prosper. Now, thank you for listening to my humble words, but seriously, take it, 140 votes, those are your neighbors, that's your community, your community, your community, your community. Okay? And the citizens for equity and government, we extend our hand. We've invited people to come to our meetings every week. Have you shown up? No. You know, very intelligent people. There's very intelligent people all over this city, but do you listen? No, you'd rather go to another city and listen to someone else. Is it because their educational system is better than ours? Or are they better than you? I'm very competitive as a quarterback. I played quarterback most of my life. I'm very competitive. Nobody's going to beat me. Nobody. But if they do, I sharpen my skills, I hone my skills and I'm coming back. Heed my words. Thank you for listening.
Any other business?
Mr. Mayor, I ask council to go into a closed session, consider them in a closed session under N.C.G. against 143, 31811, Section 5, to discuss potential acquisition, acquisitions of real property.
Hello, Lou?
Second.
Second to the right, second and a half, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back to the adjournment meeting on the second and fifth of July. Thank you for being here.
Hey, Mandy, I didn't speak-